Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of October 28th, 2019. And the time is 10:05 a.m. First item on the agenda is update on the city's golf course. Commissioner Lambert, do you want to tee this up? Have staff presentation?
No pun intended.[40.01][40.01](Laughter). Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And I think that the golf course is just always on my mind, as well as the mind of our South End residents. And I know that this was something former city administrator Jeff Green was heading up and was always my point of contact on this. And so, as Ms. Johnson is now in that role, wanted to see if we could get an update on this. I know when I was speaking with Mr. Green before he left, that there were certain deadlines in place and that things were moving forward. And I just wanted to make sure that in this transition time, that we don't lose track of what's going on with the golf course, as well as how that relates with the 8111 South Dixie site. Because I think that both of those are extremely important to the redevelopment of the South End. So, I appreciate you taking the time to update us.
Thank you. Mr. Green, I know you have been very involved in those conversations. Do you want to give us an update on where we are?
Yes, Mayor. I've got a quick presentation. Rick Green, Assistant City Administrator. So, what I'd like to do is just quickly mention that, again, this is one of our 16 strategic priorities. So, we've had a team in place that have been involved in negotiations with the bid or the proposer. And then, we've got other folks kind of waiting in the wings once we begin the project. But again, this was identified by you as one of your strategic priorities. So, just to provide a very quick chronology, back in February, a presentation was made to the city commission by four proposers seeking to redevelop the golf course. Those four proposers were ranked. And then, after negotiations with the first winner, if you will, American Lynx fell by the wayside, the city then began negotiations with McGentrick Golf Management. On June 11th, a letter was sent to them from Mr. Hayden requesting that they respond within 10 days, providing the details of their existing financial commitments and how they intended to fund the project. They responded approximately a week later, indicating that they were requesting additional 21 days to provide the information that was being requested. And then, we had our first initial kickoff meeting with them on June 25th. At that time, we also began work on a lease for the property. And we sent McGentrick Group on June 30th, a draft of what that lease would look like. On July 10th, we had our second meeting, and they presented their initial concept plan to the city. On August 7th, the legal counsel provided us comments on the proposed lease that we had sent them. And then, on August 9th, we had our third meeting with them. We originally had that meeting scheduled for July 31st, and the meeting was pushed back to August 9th. And at that time, administration had given them an additional 60 days to provide evidence of funding. So, that extension basically gave them a deadline of September 30th to provide the funding that was required to do this project. On September 12th, there was a small meeting held between McGentrick and Jeff Green and Frank Hayden to introduce a prominent donor from South Africa/Europe. And then, when we had our fifth meeting with them on October 2nd, they introduced Ernie Els as one of the partners or one of the folks who was going to be involved in the project with McGentrick. He was going to design the course. And an additional time extension was given to them until November 18th. And then, the discussion at that particular meeting focused on two primary issues. One being Phase 1 of the development was the actual redevelopment of the golf course. And Phase 2 was a second $9 million payment for the construction of the clubhouse, their training facility, which I'll show in a minute, and other amenities. So, subsequent to that meeting on October 18th, city staff sent out a final funding request letter, and I have copies of that here, I'll be happy to hand out. And then, we gave them a deadline of November 18th, close of business day. And that letter basically asked for three things. One, that they provide evidence they can fund Phase 1, and that was to be in the form of a letter of credit or some other mechanism, whether it be an attorney's trust account, but it had to be acceptable by both the city attorney and the city's chief financial officer. They had discussed with us the concept of pledges towards construction. And in that letter, we said we would not accept pledges. We wanted to see hard money to show that you could do the project. The second item that was requested was a financial pro forma, where we wanted to see what anticipated gross income they were expecting, the anticipated expenses, and then, the net income for the operation of the course. And then, lastly, it was indicated in that letter that no further extensions would be granted, as several had been granted before then. So, the next step, if McGentrick does provide evidence of funding by that November 18th deadline, then we will complete the lease and bring that back to the city commission. They will submit plans for the redevelopment of the golf course, and permits will have to be submitted. And then, their work will commence, excuse me, commence to clean the site and begin site work. If they do not provide evidence of funding, then at that point, we will have to come back to the city commission and seek further direction. So, November 18th is the deadline. I will pass out the letter here. A couple of the points I want to bring out, that when the initial proposals were submitted to the city, the McGentrick proposal dated January 14th showed a 6,900-yard course. It showed a Topgolf with a parking lot serving the Topgolf facility. It had a golf academy, a short game area, and in the clubhouse in the southeast corner of the site, along with the maintenance building in the extreme southeast corner. The plan that was subsequently presented afterwards eliminated the Topgolf in the southwest corner of the site. It still had a golf academy, a practice area, but they introduced a new par three course in addition to the regular 18-hole course. The clubhouse in the same location, and because of the environmental constraints of the maintenance building, they left that where that is today. So, you see the initial design and then, the current design. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions you may have.
Before we go into questions, I made it very clear to staff that we needed to have an idea of whether this group was going to be able to do this project. We'd gone through several months, and I don't know how many months, we were talking to the prior group, back and forth, back and forth. And then, it turned out, at the end of the day, they could not produce. And so, I didn't really want to spend a lot of time with this new group, going back and forth, back and forth, and finding out, again, that they couldn't produce. So, I instructed staff very early in the conversation to find out, to receive evidence of financial viability. And that's why we keep insisting on them coming up with tangible evidence of having the money, at least for the first phase, the $9 million, in hand. So, we'll see if they do that. And if not, we'll probably be back at square one. Now, the issue that we would need to have to discuss at that time, commissioners, is how do we move forward? I can be very candid and tell you, the city does not have $18 million to invest in redoing this golf course. Our total reserves at this time is probably about $18 million. So, we certainly don't have the financial wherewithal to do that as a city. The question is, how flexible we will be in terms of bringing in a private sector partner to help us? We've done RFPs, and we've had two or three lined up, ready to do it. And at the end of the day, well, certainly, the first one couldn't do it. We'll see what happens with the second one. But, you know, after November 18th, we will have to have some conversations. And part of that conversation might be, you know, are we willing to engage in considering some portion of the golf course or that land being developed for apartments, retail, whatever? So, we're not there yet. We'll see what happens on next month, whether these people can do it. But if they don't provide the evidence of financial capability, we're going to have to have a very hard discussion as to what we do with this golf course going forward. Okay, questions? Jeff, Commissioner Lambert, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for thinking about the future. And if this doesn't move forward, I think that's important, that we be thinking about those contingencies. But I am hopeful that it looks like McGentrick will come through with their proposals. And I appreciate that, even given that they're a nonprofit, that we're holding them to the same standards that we would hold any proposer, any developer, in that it's not pledges that they're bringing to us, but a letter of credit. You know, I guess, kind of on the discussion of the future, is I know I had been speaking with the other Mr. Green previously about the inclusion of the 3111 site, South Dixie site, and how we can start having community discussions and dialogue about what can happen there. And I know that we've been waiting for the development of the golf course before we have that. Is that still the plan?
Well, I don't know if we have a formal plan. I will say, in my capacity overseeing economic development, I think there's tremendous value to 8111, more value if the golf course gets redeveloped. Whether that's with other commercial amenities or residential amenities, I think that increases the viability of the 8111 site. Right now, through the property appraiser's office, what we paid for that property when it was at seven years ago, is about what we paid for it now, is what it's valued at. I will also say that Chris Ruge, our Economic Development Director, and I have had discussions, this is going back now three or four years, with the folks who own the shops at Palm Coast to the north. And certainly, our hope was that that center could use a little bit of work. Our hope was that maybe we could combine their facility, their site, which is over 20 acres, with our seven-acre 8111 site, and maybe do some type of mixed-use project. But I don't think that becomes viable until we know for a fact that the golf course is under construction. And certainly, a finished, completed golf course would make our property a lot more valuable. But at the end of the day, that's your call.
Okay. I apologize. I think, did I say 3111?
I knew you meant 8111.
Too many elevens. And my other question also circles around community input. When we were discussing with West Palm Beach Lynx before that discussion ended, they did a number of community outreach meetings. Are we expecting that same process with this development plan?
To my knowledge, I'm not sure to the extent of the community meetings they've had. What they've told the city is what they are envisioning as a championship course. That's part of the reason why they eliminated the Topgolf from their proposal. They said they would like to have a championship course that could possibly, I know it's a long shot, but, you know, possibly be the host for the Honda Classic if they could get that relocated here. But I think at this point, we're waiting to see if the project's going to be viable before we have those further discussions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Paduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Green, what's your feeling as to their financial ability to complete this project? Or is it completely a wait-and-see? I mean, do you have no feeling whatsoever?
I don't know these folks well enough to hazard a guess. I will tell you that what their intention from day one, as they presented back in February, was to create a community foundation, and then, basically, go out and solicit donors that would participate in the funding of the $18 million. I have not been privy to those discussions, so I really don't know, you know, how far along they are.
And then, one follow-up. What is your, what's the anticipated lease term? If they were to do this project like this, with the $9 million and the $9 million, what's the anticipated lease term that we would be looking at?
Can I put our city attorney on the spot? But...
I mean, we're not talking about a 99-year...
No, 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 not at all.
No. We don't generally do 99-year leases. We would negotiate the least amount of time that would be necessary in order to get the appropriate financing, if they were looking for financing. But I don't have a lease in front of me. It's probably a 50-year term.
I believe that's what we were discussing, yes.
I can confirm it, as proposed.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks for the presentation, Mr. Green. Knowing that this has been on our radar for a while, and that I know for the South End and a lot of the city, that this is something we want to see, as the mayor has said, done sooner rather than later, we have a commission meeting on November the 18th. And I see at the letter, the deadline is the end of the day. Would it be prudent to be able to put this on an agenda for a discussion item that day as to not lose another couple of weeks?
Yeah, we could certainly look at that, and get that on there.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, depending on what happens at that point, I realize November the 18th is kind of looming closer rather than later, which is a good thing, so that we get that update. Whenever we have this discussion, again, depending if we end up trying to come up with a new plan, one of the things I think I would request is going back out and getting that community input on what the community would like to see the plan going forward. The community has had input saying what kind of development plan, and I think this was ideal for what their development plan is. But if this is no longer on the table, I think it's fair for us to go back out to the community and say, listen, we've tried Road A, we've tried Road B, this is the crossroads that we're at. And, you know, at that time, I think, trying to entertain if there are some options, knowing that a development plan is far out of how we could potentially activate the space that we have, understanding we're closed down right now for golf play, are there opportunities for, you know, festival leases? Or, I know we had a constituent here today that recommended a paintball tournament. Could we use the area for first responders to do some training? I think having some activation down there would be good, as we look at the conversation going forward. Of course, with the end goal being a redevelopment, but I think there are some easy ones we could have for interim plans. So, thank you.
Commissioner Nearing.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, actually, I was Commissioner Shoff going along those same lines. I was, Mayor, I don't know if we're going to meet on the 25th, which is the week of Thanksgiving, but perhaps if we are, that conversation would be best for a commission work session as opposed to a commission meeting. So, I just want to throw that out there. Because I do, to your point, Mayor, believe that that's an important next step if it does not work out. Now, I should preface by saying this, I think the city has been very gracious with time and very deliberate with McGentrick. And I'm all very supportive of November 18th, close of business, and either they have the information or they don't. If they don't, again, if we are indeed meeting on the 25th as a commission work session, that may be a better route to really deliberate on this. I think we, not I think, we have a newer commission in terms of hearing where folks, the appetite around, as the mayor has pointed out, around development. I think, to me, that that is key. We need to get that out and figure out where we are on that, well before any RFP, RFQ, RFP goes out. Parenthetically, there was a three-hour wait at Drive Shack this weekend on Saturday. So, just, if anyone cares.
To your point, Commissioner Nearing, at the minimum, we could at least get a report on where we are on November 18th. And that's kind of what I had expected. I'm not sure. And I think a workshop might be more appropriate, to have the more robust, comprehensive discussion as to where we go from here, and assuming that the news on November 18th is not positive. But on the 25th, are people going to be around that week for Thanksgiving, commissioners? All right, so, we'll keep that on the calendar then. Commissioner Riles, did you have, okay, I don't know if your hand was up or not. All right, any more follow-up? That's kind of where we are. Any additional questions, comments on this item? Mr. Green, thank you very much. And we will be counting the days until November 18th. Okay, next item is discussion on CRA for the statute, CRA, city inter-local, city RMA contract. Commissioner Riles, you asked us to be on, do you want, I won't say tee it up. Would you care to introduce this item?
Certainly. Mayor, thank you so much. I, because the vast majority of the CRA district is in District 3, I felt it incumbent upon me to try and educate myself on how the CRA should be operating, and then juxtapose or compare it to how we're operating now. And so, I just had some questions. I realize that we have an independent contractor that is performing with the city in that role. We had Mr. Ward serving as executive director. Now, he's gone. And I, you know, I received a phone call from another person that would like the position. But in reading the bylaws, I think we have not been operating in accordance therewith. And so, I kind of wanted to know, you know, has there been some change? Or, you know, why have we deviated from the way the bylaws read?
All right, why don't we have a little bit, we'll have a presentation from the city attorney on how we got to where we are now. And then, I'll insert some commentary as to what happened with Mr. Ward.
Okay. Before I begin, Kimberly Rothenberg, city attorney. And I have actually prepared a little bit broader presentation that includes what is required to create a CRA, the powers and authority of the CRA under the statute, the creation of the West Palm Beach CRA, staffing of the CRA, the city's contract regarding the appointment of the executive director, and the future processes for appointment of executive director. If you all don't need the background history, let me know. But if you'd like me to continue with that, I'm happy to do so. So, in essence, the creation of a CRA starts by making a determination of slum and blight, making the appropriate findings of necessity, and defining the area that the CRA should operate under. The city, in that regard, has followed all of the necessary processes for the creation of both the city center CRA, and then, subsequently, the Pleasant City and Northwood CRA. In addition, the, once the areas are defined, the governing body either appoints a board or appoints itself as a board. And in this instance, the city at the time appointed the members of its governing body as the members of the CRA agency. Following that, the city also followed the statutory requirements of adopting a redevelopment plan for each of the identified areas and established trust funds. This slide simply goes through a history of some of those ordinances and resolutions that were adopted over time to create the city's CRA and the areas of redevelopment.
And you will make this PowerPoint available to the commissioners?
I absolutely will.
Okay.
So, statutory authorities that are granted to CRA in a broad context, they are aimed toward encouraging private development, creating workable programs to eliminate the spread of slum and blight, to encourage redevelopment within the CRA areas, to redevelopment, to redevelop slum and blighted areas, to provide affordable housing in those areas, and to incentivize redevelopment by private entities. Another broad area is that the CRA is required to appropriate funds to preserve and enhance the tax base within their taxing authority areas. Some additional enumerated powers, with the overall power being that the CRA has the all powers that are necessary and convenient to carry out and effectuate the purposes of the Community Redevelopment Act. And it has a list of things that include, in summary, executing contracts, disseminating information about redevelopment information, additionally, acquisition of property, both purchase and sale within the areas, demolition and removal of buildings, those type of So, how do we exercise the powers within the CRA? The CRA, the Community Redevelopment Agency, is a separate legal entity that's separate and apart from the city, separate and apart from your duties as commissioners. The powers of CRA is executed by the board. The board acts by majority of the members present to vote on items before them. As it relates to the executive director, there's a provision in the code, in the statute that specifically says, "An agency may employ an executive director, technical experts, and such other agents and employees, permanent and temporary, as it requires, and determine their qualifications, duties, and compensation. For such legal services as it requires, an agency may employ or retain its own legal So, prior to 2013, the CRA was staffed by city employees from the '80s up until 2013. That staffing was funded through an interlocal agreement between the city and the CRA. In December of 2013, the city and the CRA agreed to outsource those staffing needs and the management of the CRA. They did that by the city executing a staffing agreement with the CRA, and then, the CRA funding that staffing agreement. In January of 2019, the board, the city again, adopted the second staffing and management agreement. It's for a term that expires on December of 2022. I believe there's a two-year extension renewal ability within the contract. Under the contract...
Yes, a clarification?
Yes, Madam.
So, Ms. Rothenberg, can you explain why does the city hold that contract and the CRA just fund it?
Because the, at the time that it was done, because the staffing is done through the executive office of the city, those employees are managed through the executive division of the city under the mayor's authority. So, the staffing was done as a city contract with the city as opposed to the CRA. The CRA funds the staffing contract.
So, in other words, even prior to RMA coming in, the CRA was staffed with employees of the city?
Correct.
Correct? And those employees were city employees and came under the rubric and the organization of the city?
Yes, they did.
Correct? So, when we moved to outsource it, the staffing was moved from the city to RMA?
Correct.
So, it made sense for the city to be the party to the contract with RMA as opposed to the CRA, because that's where the staffing had originally been done by the city.
Exactly. Because you need the city to be able to monitor and implement the contract. So, that's, you know, the day-to-day operation of the contract is administered through the executive office of the city.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a further point of clarification. So, prior to 2013, when the CRA was part of city staff, that would have meant the city, in essence, billed back, and I'm using loose terms, to the CRA, all of that administration, because the city would have been implementing HR plans, insurance, et cetera, anything that was required of CRA board.
Right.
So, and then, the reverse is correct now, where now that the CRA is an outsourced entity, the CRA is billing back to the city for city services used by the CRA?
In essence, that's correct.
Okay.
The city and the CRA enter into an interlocal agreement that the, all the funding requirements of the operation of the CRA are paid for by the CRA as a reimbursement to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Or funded, and then, paid by the city. So, the contract itself, though, has a provision that says that the executive director is appointed by RMA, that the city, if they're unhappy with the appointment of the executive director, can tell RMA that, and that RMA will choose another executive director that will serve in that capacity. So, that's your current framework of how it works under the contract.
And it's the city that makes that notice to the CRA, to RMA, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Riles?
Can you point to what document, what provision under, that has been executed that took away the power of the CRA to hire its own executive director and to control its employees?
I can simply tell you that the city entered into the staffing and management contract with RMA that defines the obligations of each party. At the time that the city and the CRA both were considering those documents, this is the framework that was established. It's currently a contractual obligation and duty. But looking forward, how you want that to happen, I can go through here are some of the services of the contract, but going forward, your selection process, if you wanted to change... but going forward, your selection process, if you wanted to change what's currently in place, you can amend your contract, uh, ta- take out if in fact you're worried about that executive director position and having it, um, provided for under a different process. You would then come up with what is your process and what qualifications are you looking for? And how do we select the executive director? And it can be selected through the CRA board.
Well, let's go backwards. Let's go backwards. In December, well, well, in 2013, presumably there were resolutions passed by the city and by the CRA?
There were.
Authorizing this outsourcing, correct?
Yes, that's the only way we can, um, operate.
Both bodies passed resolutions authorizing the current structures. Does that answer your question, Commissioner, or you have further?
I, I don't know if it does, because without seeing the document, I don't know what powers the board, uh, let, let me put it this way. Uh, the CRA has bylaws, correct?
It does.
And those bylaws, uh, provide that the CRA board, that would be all of the commissioners, including the mayor, uh, hire and fire an executive director?
I'm not sure if those are the exact terms, but I think that that is the intent.
Okay. Is there a resolution or is there a document that takes that authority away from the CRA? Pursuant to the bylaws?
Your, your actions through the adoption of subsequent resolutions said that you would follow a different process.
That, that's what I'm asking you, is, is there a resolution that allows for us to? Because in the, in, isn't there a statutory requirement on how CRA operates? 168?
There is a whole statute that talks about the CRA.
Right, right.
The one section that we went over said that the CRA may, um, hire such employees as it seem, deems necessary. It included your executive director and some other enumerated employees.
Right.
Um, how you do that is, is a function of what you do as a body.
So i- if you would then, so that I'm clear, uh, I, I would just ask you to get me a copy of the resolution that abdicated the power of the CRA, uh, to the city in terms of hiring and firing the employees that work for the CRA?
I, I'll get you all of the documents that surrounded that transaction.
Thank you.
So, so I think a question is, and you may even need to go further back, because is, is I understood it based upon your presentation, even prior to the outsourcing in 2013, the staffing was done through the city?
It was.
Okay, so I don't know if that, that was pursuant to a resolution back in the eighties or whatever?
I'll, I'll follow all the way back through and see if there are some, um, resolutions or votes of the board along the way to, uh, hire employees.
Yeah.
I don't recall, uh, during my tenure here, having the board have those discussions. And I've been here about fifteen years.
All right, okay. Uh, Commissioner Shoff, then we'll get back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I guess the, the problem that I'm having in this conversation is we're abdicating, because according to what I can see from what you've presented here today, the CRA board has not abdicated any of that power, if I'm correct. There's, the CRA is still fully in control of who can be hired and fired. It is done through the outsourced arm. So in essence, RMA can bring an executive director and this body sitting as the CRA board can say, no, we don't want that, that CRA director. And just the same as I sit and have, I can have meetings and conversations with RMA individually as any commissioner here on the day as can, um, or sitting as the CRA director board. So there's, we, we still have the ability, sitting here as this board, to be in control of the staffing as far as executive directing, in that we get the say of yes or no. They can, they can bring forward a candidate and we can say no to that candidate. According to what you wrote, wrote up there, that's what that says.
It, it says that, you know, they, they select the employees who will serve in the various ru- roles. The city has to be satisfied with the work that those employees do, and if they're unsatisfied, they can ask for another under the contract.
Correct.
A different employee in, in, in any given position, there's many of them.
And so in essence, we would control the employees performing within those roles?
Provided that they're, yes, that, that RMA has employees to substitute them with. You've, you've outsourced your abi- y- you're allowing RMA to select because they're an outsourced company. So they're their employees and they work under the contract for the city. Unlike if they were city employees, they would, we would have more control over who's applying, who's, who you select or choose. But if you've outsourced the management and the staffing to RMA, they're RMA employees and they would have to bring them to you, uh, work. And if you're unsatisfied under the contract, you as a board, or in, in this instance, I believe the mayor as well, because it's a city contract, can say, we're unhappy with this particular employee.
Correct. But I guess my point that I'm making here is, it's not as if by hiring RMA as a contractor, we are required to keep the staff that RMA has put in place if we are unsatisfied with the work that they're doing. Understanding, it's not that we're saying, hey, we have candidate X, we would like to see them in that role as the CRA board. It is still RMA coming to us with their employees that they have hired, and that is what, w- w- that is who fills those positions.
They do currently. And, and in order to change that, you would have to change the contract. Otherwise, you would be paying for folks that you're not getting a service from.
Understood.
And I think a, a, a tweak, uh, is that, as I, as I understand the contract with respected executive director, um, the, the removal of the executive director can be requested by, uh, the city.
Correct.
Correct? So, so it's not, not the CRA board technically, because the contract is with the city?
With the city.
Um, which is how we ended up with the decision on Mr. Ward. And then, under the current contract, uh, if we, if we stayed there, then RMA would come up with an alternative for the executive director, uh, that they would choose, uh, and then that person would act in that capacity. And if there was dissatisfaction, you would rinse and repeat. You'd repeat the same process. But they, RMA does not necessarily, they're not required to seek prior approval of the replacement executive director from either the city or the CRA.
Not under the existing contract.
Not under the existing contract. Okay, all right. Uh, I think Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, under the existing contract, the, and the analogy I'll use is the, the horse has left the barn, because we are being, at that point, as a CRA board, we're being reactive, um, to, uh, judgment on a scope of work, as opposed to, um, as an elected body coming in and, and making that decision on the front end. It's, because that's really where I was going. This background is very helpful. Thank you so much for it, I appreciate it. But to me, the germane, uh, points are what's before us, and that's really what I'm hoping today I can leave here with clarification around my role, um, as to we have, uh, an interim, uh, CRA director. Uh, sounds like we are, um, we is relative now, so I'm being very broad with that. Sounds like there is an action to fill that position. The question I have, and I thought I've heard it, but I'd like to hear it more deliberately, is what is the process that this current CRA board plays in the selection of the next CRA director in real time?
In real time, with your existing contract, RMA would bring forward another executive director, unless it's revised.
Under the existing contract?
Yes.
All right. Um, Commissioner Ross?
Nope, Beduzzi, I think it was before.
Okay, Commissioner Beduzzi.
So it would have to be still ratified, though, by this board, though? No?
No. Under the existing contract. Now, let, let me insert, since we're on this topic, uh, and, and we'll speak to the process. Uh, it has always been my hope and desire, uh, I, I campaigned on this. Uh, it was something that was, uh, brought to me also by my transition team, uh, to amend the RMA contract such that the executive director of the CRA would now be a city employee. So we would remove the executive director from the RMA tent, if you will, and place him and her, him or her, under the city tent. Uh, I, 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 I did that because I wanted to make sure, in, in my view, it was, uh, important to have the face of the CRA be a city employee so that they can also interface and oversee the RMA contract on behalf of the city. Now, to do that, we would have to amend the RMA contract. And I've had conversations with the owners of RMA, and they are amenable to doing that. Now, how do we come to, and this is addressing Commissioner Neering's point, how do we come to, if that is the case, if we do amend the contract, then what role does a CRA board play in selecting the new executive director? Uh, and, and so I am proposing that we would do a search, uh, go through a process of doing a search to find a new executive director, and then this board would weigh in on that. Um, and so that would be the process going forward to identify, uh, the replacement executive director, assuming that there is a vote, uh, to a decision, uh, of this body, a mutual meeting of the minds between RMA and the city slash CRA to amend the RMA contract. Actually, it would just be the city, so you all sitting as the city commissioners, uh, to amend the contract. Uh, so there will be a, 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 a understanding of a two-step process. One, to amend the contract, uh, agree to move the executive director into the city's tent, uh, and then to, uh, identify the process pursuant to which the executive director, as a city employee, uh, uh, would be hired, uh, to run the CRA. Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the question I would have, if, if that were the case, is, um, does weigh-in mean ratify, uh, an applicant that is brought forth by administration, i.e. you, Mayor? Or does weigh-in mean something different as compared? And the only thing I will say, the asterisk there is that this is, in essence, a CRA position unlike, um, other positions that require ratification. But, you know, obviously, the, the onus is, is, is on you as mayor. This, to me, is different because it is a CRA position. So I don't want to take us there, because I know we haven't, I don't think we've talked about or made an agreement on amending the contract, but just because we've gone down that road, if that were to happen, the question, it's already so long-winded. The question is, define weigh-in. What does weigh-in mean, um, as you, as you've presented it?
Well, as, as I thought I'd stated, there would be a process, a search, if you will. Uh, and, um, you know, there would, there would be a, uh, uh, committee of this board uh, that would interview applicants, uh, and, you know, make recommendations. And then the, the board, as a selection committee, uh, would come up with, uh, the, the applicant they felt was uh, most appropriate to guide and direct the CRA as a city employee. Did that answer your question?
That answers it a lot more than the first one, yes, yeah.
Commissioner Ross?
And based on that, uh, rubric, would the city ultimately have the final say on if that applicant was hired?
No, it's a decision of the board, of the CRA.
Okay. Because, you know, the reason I say that we've abdicated our authority is because if an employee is a city employee versus being a CRA employee, the city then does have the legal right to fire any employee that it's, it's one of their employees. Whereas if it's a CRA employee, the CRA board has the right to hire and fire that employee. Am I wrong in that, Ms. Rothenberg?
You're not wrong in that.
Okay. So then, at this point in time, because we've entered into this contract with RMA, the city has the right to hire and fire RMA, correct?
It's a city contract, yes.
Okay. So that's how I got to the point of abdicating our authority. The CRA no longer has the ability to hire and fire who's running our, our business. And so that's where, where we, where we, where, where there was a misunderstanding. And so, you know, it would be my preference that the CRA, uh, engaged the next CRA director versus having that person be a city employee.
Well, so, so you mean the CRA then is gonna come up with its own separate set of HR responsibilities, uh, pension accounts, et cetera? The, one of the reasons, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it was deemed, all, even prior to RMA, that the employees of the CRA were city employees, is that we had that infrastructure in place already. So if you're talking about the CRA having its own separate human relations infrastructure, I'm not sure that's such a good idea for one employee.
No. What I'm saying is, is, is the way it's normally done is that there is an interlocal agreement that specifies that the employees will be city employees for purposes of those, uh, ministerial, uh, acts, but they would be under the direction and control of the CRA.
Well, I think that the, uh, what we have in place, if we do amend the contract, would provide that the CRA ba- or a board have oversight responsibility, uh, for the CRA executive director. That's not, I'm not proposing that being changed. So if I use the term city employee, uh, it, it, and, and maybe the interlocal would define that, it's not meant that the, uh, 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 mayor would have the right to hire or fire that city employee. It's city employee to the extent that it comes under the, uh, hu- hu- HR infrastructure that's already in place at the city level. Uh, it is always contemplated, I've always contemplated, that the CRA board, uh, would hire or fire that individual, unlike what's happening now, where RMA, uh, determines who they want to be the CRA executive director, and we simply sit back and either decide based upon the work performance, we do not like that individual, and then they'll come up with another name. Uh, actually, what I'm proposing is that the CRA board would have a much more direct oversight of the new position. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I think I, I, I hear between the, the system that we have now, where we have RMA that selects an executive director, that doesn't give the CR, CRA board full control over who that person is, to Commissioner Neering's point, it makes us reactive. We do have control over it, because we have the ability to say, the work being performed isn't up to the standard of what we, what we'd like. However, that's after a period of time, of which we're not making traction on projects, of which we're not making progress. As opposed to, um, the, the second scenario of, of which we're having a city employee, a CRA director is a full-time city employee. I think as a CRA board, the concern there would be that it would be out of the control of the, the, the CRA board itself. I understand, it doesn't sound like there is another path that is reasonable, um, given that the CRA board is not a full-time staff to the CRA, to create a, a separate CRA infrastructure. That's what that would require. If we were employing our own CRA director, we would have a CRA, you know, HR department, a CRA administration, and that's why we have the interlocal agreement, so that the city already has that structure in place. It sounds like, um, and this is, this is something that, that I've always been in favor, um, you know, uh, inner-city administrator, um, Johnson and I have had this conversation too, about making sure that we get the best person, because I think that's what, what I'm hearing from this board, is that we want to make sure that there are choices, and I hear, Mayor, you saying that's what's in your, your purview as well, um, making sure we have the best choices, going out and having a search. And I think what it sounds like is, the, the wish of this board too, is to make sure that we keep that control as well. And it doesn't sound like anybody here is not amenable to that, either from administration's point of view or from CRA. So it sounds like we're kind of at a place where we have the best of all worlds, right? Where, we're looking to have, um, that full control and not be reactive, have a, an employee that, um, is more well within the control of the CRA, and still have the ability on the hiring and firing side. And, and I think that, that to me is, is the one thing, um, to, to the point of having this be a CRA employee. Just having gone through the experience under, um, our city charter of having s- a, a city employee, which the, the mayor has the ability to terminate, and then this, the city commission ratifies. I think what I'm hearing, just for a point of clarification, that under the proposed new role of having the CRA director as a city employee, that either as the city commission or the CRA board, we would have the ability to, um, approve both ways, upon a termination or upon a new hiring. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and we're working out in the interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city, and, uh, And I suppose before you were willing to move forward, you'd like to see a draft of that interlocal agreement to comfort yourself that you have the duties, rights, and responsibility that you're seeking. So I would propose that that would be the next step. We'd get a draft of an interlocal agreement between the CRA and the city. You all take a look at it, make sure you're comfortable with it. And I think another discussion we should have, or at least a draft of a document, which I was proposing to get you, would be an outline of the job description, scope of services, however you want to describe it, that the executive director would have, so that you would have a sense, an input going into it, as before we began the search, as what that position would entail. So I'd like to see both of those documents get prepared and gotten in front of you and getting feedback from you. Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to that, could we also, if we are going that route, it sounds to me that a certain portion of dollars will be backed out of the existing contract. I'd like to see if I could, just at that moment in time, what it is that the city is paying monthly, and what are we receiving for those dollars?
You mean under the contract as a whole, or just for the executive director position?
Well, no, contract as a whole. So, understanding that we're obviously going to be backing out dollars that are associated with an executive director, there may be more or less, I don't know, it sounds like that's where we're landing. But I'd like to see, okay, if it was, you know, a hundred dollars a month, and now we're at eighty dollars a month, so the twenty is going towards the executive director and the city. I'd like to see, again, just once again, a reset for me, and maybe the other commissioners as well, the eighty dollars a month. What are we getting, what are we getting for that?
All right, if we can, Administrator Johnson, if you could prepare a summary of the, with City Attorney's help, a summary of the contract with the fiscal impact of the existing contract, and get that to the commissioners, so they could take a look at that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls.
And could we likewise get a copy of the contract?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's public record, yes. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I think along with that discussion, if we're going to be considering ending that part of the contract with RMA, I think we need to have a discussion of the pros and cons, or the reasons why we would be doing that, just so that we're all on the same page. I think we're all kind of saying we're moving in that direction, but I think we need to have a discussion as the CRA board to do that. And Mayor, I do appreciate, I think what you were saying is that, at the same time we're having the discussion about the interlocal agreement and about that contract, that we will not lose time or footing on the process of making our selection and moving forward with a job description, a job selection rubric of how the CRA board would then select, in a very transparent process, the new CRA director.
No, it's my intent, commitment, that we keep the trains running. And we have Ms. Justice, who is the interim CRA director. We have RMA, they understand that we are looking to keep progress, continue making progress on the various projects. We have a number of projects that are out there, and it's, we want to get those done. And so we've got tremendous institutional memory in the form of Ms. Justice, and with RMA, and, you know, we have the staff capabilities to continue moving forward in that direction. Any other? I'm sorry, we interrupted your presentation. Did you have more slides?
No, my presentation was actually done, I just kind of went back to the contract services, as you all discussed, what are kind of the broad scope of the services, but the presentation was complete.
Piece of the puzzle we haven't discussed is the, and Madam City Attorney, if you don't mind, talking about how we got to the point of removing the former executive director, and that that was done in accordance with the terms of the existing contract. Under the contract, if the city could advise RMA that they were not satisfied with that individual, and that was done, and so we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, at least I believe, you tell me if I'm wrong, crossed the Ts and dotted the Is with respect to the removal of the former executive director.
We did, as the, as the process is set up, through interlocal agreement between the two agencies, which they're lawfully allowed to do.
Okay. All right. Yes.
And that's really where my interests, or the questions I had began, is that I wasn't consulted, I don't know anybody else on the board was consulted about removing the CRA director. And so I realize that, I realize now that the city had all the power to remove the director, and the CRA had given that up some time ago, when they entered into the agreement with RMA, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay.
But that was not a decision made lightly. And so I had information as the mayor, as to the performance of Mr. Ward, and there, you know, there were, that wasn't a, I wasn't shooting off at the hip when I made that decision.
I recognize that, Mayor. And all I was, the purpose of me wanting this workshop is that I don't think that any of us had a true understanding of all of these different and various agreements, and how these agreements were being administered by the city, and what role we had as sitting board members with the CRA, what, if any, powers and authority we had to control these agreements.
No, I think this is a very timely workshop. You know, this, we did the RMA contract initially back in 2013. I was on the commission end, maybe Commissioner Nearing, but I don't think anyone else on the dais was on the commission end. So I think it's very timely to have this discussion, and in light of the fact that we're, that I'm proposing that we amend the agreement, so that you at least know from whence we've come, where we are, and where we want to go, and get you the information you need in order to make an informed decision. Commissioner Paduzzi.
So if I'm understanding correctly, we still retain all of the power when it comes to CRA functions. It's just we've decided, as a body over time, to have it be administered in a little different way, where we have a little more hands-off, as opposed to hands-on with some of these functions. And maybe we want to get back to having a little bit more hands-on. But we retain, we've always retained the power of the board. If we, if the board decides to change the current makeup and fire RMA, and say, we're directly hiring, and we want to have an HR department, and we want to have, we probably have the authority to do it.
Yeah, you certainly have the authority. Well, I don't know, because the contract is with the city. The RMA contract is with the city, so, but you sitting as the board, the city commissioners of the city, could do that. One of the reasons, and we'll get into this more, maybe in another workshop, when we talk about, as Madam President asks, for the pros and cons of making the amendment. One of the, certainly one of the pros, and one of the things that went into the thinking, and by the way, I actually voted against the outsourcing of the RMA contract, to, outsourcing the CRA to the, to RMA. But over time, I've recognized that there are resources that RMA has in-house, that they could bring to particular projects on a project-by-project basis. These are people, these are staff that we, as a city slash CRA, do not have to pay for on a permanent basis. So when the need for that staff ends on a particular project, then they come off of the payroll, if you will, of the city. So it's good to have that deep bench, if you will, that we could draw up on from time to time, as the needs of different project requires. But in my view, having an independent, independent from RMA, an executive director who's independent from RMA and a city slash CRA employee, I think is good for us, and we can get into this more, because it gives us, it avoids any appearance of mixed loyalties. If the employee is an employee of RMA, and the question becomes, not saying this ever happened, but in my mind, the potential for the question arises, whether decisions are being made by that executive director on behalf of his or her employer, RMA, or his, or the city. And so I wanted to remove that appearance, and if they are a city employee, then I know that they are acting in the best interest of the city. And so having that balance, if you will, I think is important, and we can certainly have more of those conversations at a subsequent workshop. Okay, Commissioner Rawls.
Yeah, I, Madam Attorney, now, the, have we done away with the bylaws of the CRA?
You know, you mentioned the bylaws, but I can tell you, again, for the last fifteen years, I don't recall anyone ever referring back to the bylaws. The last time they were amended, though, I'm going from memory, I believe, was 2008. But I don't recall the board ever referencing or referring to their bylaws in any meeting or otherwise. But they are, they do exist.
Well, the reason I ask is because there are certain milestones that the bylaws require us, as a CRA board, to maintain. For instance, an annual meeting where officers of the CRA are elected. I don't know if we're still operating that way, or have we abandoned that process? And are we statutorily allowed to abandon that process?
You create your bylaws, we can certainly look at the bylaws and see if they need to be amended or not. I think that you get to, as a board, because while the statute says you can create processes, it doesn't mandate what that process looks like, so.
Can I ask that you have a member of your staff look at our bylaws in light of the current, and even the proposed structure, and see if any amendments are required? If we're going through this process, whether it's amending the RMA contract, hiring a new executive director, let's make sure that the bylaws are consistent with what we're doing.
Will do.
All right, Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, Mayor, and if you just indulge me with one last comment. As Commissioner of District One, where the CRA highly impacts the future development of my district, this is something that District One has been looking for specifically, of taking a new step forward in CRA direction, and so we're hopeful in this process. And I think, as much as we can, also engage neighbors and engage constituents in this process, I think we are better for it, to try to make sure that, this is a big step forward. We're taking a big bite out of this apple, and I want it to be the best bite. So, again, thank you to this board and the mayor for your leadership on moving forward.
You're welcome, I guess. You're welcome. Okay. So we have a plan of action going forward. Let's do a draft interlocal agreement. Let's schedule a workshop where we could discuss the pros and cons of amending the contract to have an executive director as a city employee. And then if we can get a copy of the contract, the RMA contract, to the commissioners, and have a fiscal summary, if you will, of that contract that would be attached. And if you can have your team start looking at our bylaws and see if any amendments or updates are required, is there anything else that I'm missing from that action list? Yes.
If I could, now, on the duties and responsibilities.
Yes, yes, yes.
Are you looking for the commissioners to give us input on that?
Let's see if we could come up with an initial draft of duties and responsibilities that we could circulate to the commissioners and solicit their input. But let's do the heavy lifting on the first crack at that, and I'll take a look at it. All right? Okay. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters other. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we've had an eventful last month or two, and so I just,
You think?
I just wanted to bring up a topic to the mayor and administration, as well as to fellow commissioners, because we did have a discussion about the master bicycle plan, and specifically as it relates to Flagler Drive and what we'll be doing there. And I know that we specifically promised community input and community discussion on that bicycle master plan. I was just wondering what the process was, moving forward, and making sure that we can set a date and continue that discussion.
That's a good question. What I'd like to do is have a presentation to the commission of the entire bicycle master plan that was adopted, probably before most of you were sitting on the commission. I don't know the actual date. But I think it's important for us to revisit what that looks like, what the rationale for it was, as a whole, to the commission, as a first step. And then the second step is, we would do a road show, where we would take the comprehensive bike master plan to the different neighborhoods. I want us, I want the message to go out to the communities as to why we believe this is an appropriate direction in which the city should head. So I don't want us to get so caught up in the weeds that we're only looking at trees, and we're not looking at the whole forest. How's that for mixing metaphors in the agricultural area? Okay. So that is the plan, is that I wanted to come back to this body first, so that you all could make sure you understand what the scope of the bike master plan was, is, and what the rationale is. And then we will schedule a road show to take that story to the various neighborhoods. So again, they could see what the big picture is, and the rationale for the big picture. Because what I don't want to do is get so caught up that we're looking, we're proving, in face of the city or otherwise, a .6 mile segment here, or a one and a half mile segment there, without having a sense as to how this all fits in, in the grand scheme, of where we are looking to take our city. Did that answer your?
It did, and I just want to be clear, because I appreciate you saying the bigger picture, because at first, when you were saying appropriate direction, I just wanted to clarify that that means the larger plan, and not necessarily that we're taking, you know, these specific links to the community to say, this is how it is, but we're saying, hey, as a commission, we adopted a bicycle master plan, how we execute that is still being unfolded and being determined. And what I would really like to make sure that we do is almost have, what I've heard some people call a conversation primer, where it is that we have a larger conversation about why bicycle lanes, why pedestrian-friendly, why, you know, art in public places, I know that's another discussion, but I think that it's important to always, to start with why.
No, and that's a very good point, and I see that as part of the conversation. So when the master plan is brought back, I will instruct staff to have those kinds of talking points. Why even, why do we need a bicycle master plan? What is the justification for it? What's the data supporting it? So that we understand what the rationale is for putting together that as part of the strategy of the city. That's a very good point.
Thank you, and I appreciate allowing the community input. I think that's really important.
You're welcome. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you very much, commissioners. Have a wonderful day, wonderful weekend.